What it is, what it do? You already know who it is, it's ya boy! Back again with another episode of Doki Doki Blue Skies. The last episode, we got it in! We got the good ending, ladies and gentlemen! And, now I don't know what to do. I don't know where the mod is gonna go after this, so... I guess the only way we're gonna find out is if we go through it together, so... I hope you're as ready as I am, cuz I don't plan on wasting any more time with this. The sound of my alarm rouses me back to consciousness. Normally, I'd be a little grumpy at the thought of yet another early start for school, but not today. Thinking about Valentine's Weekend, the Valentine's Weekend Yuri and I spent with each other. It really couldn't have ended any better. Waking up to her on Sunday, with neither of us clothed? I blush as I hop out of bed. Now that we've taken our relationship to the next level, I wonder, what's the next occasion going to be? Flashes of Yuri's body flicker through my mind. Man, I really am the luckiest guy alive. With a grin, I complete the rest of my morning routine and head to school. Looks like the weather is emulating my feelings, it's uncharacteristic- uncharacteristically warm today. And the nasty gray skies of winter and nowhere to be seen, you know, he never did stop to think about that note he got from Sayori. He doesn't even know he got it from Sayori. Can't complain.
Morning, Killen.
Ah, hey Yuri, what's up?
Just thought to let you know that I won't be in school today, it looks like I've come down with some kind of cold.
That sucks. You don't need anything, do you? Like any medicine or whatever?
No, no, I think I'll be okay, thank you for asking though.
You sure? I wouldn't really mind coming over after school.
Positive, I'll let you know if I feel any better.
Okay, sounds good. Hope you feel better soon.
Thank you. I love you, Killen.
Love you too Yuri, speak soon! Aw man, sucks I won't be seeing Yuri in school today. You know, it seems pretty convenient that she's not gonna be in school. It just so happens to not be in school right after we got it in over the weekend. I wonder what's that all about? And then I wonder if we're gonna see Sayori today? And then I wonder if she's gonna ask us about what happened over the weekend? Some- something's up, I don't know. Huh. I actually turned into a lovesick puppy, haven't I? Well, I mean, you got it in! I just... That changes- that changes a brother. Changes you. I smile as I shake my head and carry on walking.
And that's the end of today's lesson, everyone. Such a shame to end on such an interesting note.
Bruh, you wanna talk about interesting notes? I gotta see some interesting notes of Yuri over the weekend, ah!
And suppose anyone would rather learn about the relationship between Hitler and Mussolini instead of stuffing their faces with delicious food?
His own stomach rumbles, causing the class to laugh.
Well, I'd hope no one would, because I'm really hungry, so... Go google that shit yourself. Until next time, guys.
He has like silver and red and stuff in his eyes, it's actually really interesting. I stand up and make my way over to the door. Oh man, I bet the others will tease me about Valentine's Day too. Good thing Yuri's not there, otherwise you might stuff your foot in your mouth so hard... It'll come out your behind, you'll be able to walk with it again. Totally forgot about that. Sayori? Sayori, Natsuki, and Marga are already there by the time I set foot inside. Marga's tapping something on her laptop while attempting to eat, while Sayori's holding and grossing her food. On the other hand, Natsuki doesn't seem to have any food in front of her, instead of focusing on what's like yet another shoujo manga. Morning, guys. It's warm today, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, I have to say, it's a huge relief, because tennis practices aren't nearly as enjoyable when it's freezing outside. You still play tennis in the winter? You're so dedicated, Monica! More like crazy! You'd be amazed at how- how often those traits coincide.
As I pull my food out and begin eating, Marga closes her laptop later and puts the machine into a bag it fits snugly into.
Is Yuri not with you today?
Nah, she says she wasn't feeling very well today. Natsuki mumbles under her breath, it sounds suspiciously like morning sickness. Uh oh. Yeah, it's probably best to act like I didn't hear that.
Oh, what's wrong? Is it the flu?
Nope, uh, some kind of- some kind of bug. I'd offered to go- I offered to go and see her after school, but she said she'd be okay.
You know, that's probably for the best.
Well, what do you mean?
I mean, you two already spent a lot of time with each other, right? I'm guessing you two already spent- also spent the Valentine's Weekend with each other too. Of course, it's nice to spend time with your partner, but it's also healthy to take a break, don't you think?
I hadn't really thought of it like that. Yeah, I guess you're right. I'm just a bit worried, that's all. Marga laughs softly.
Killen, it's just a little bug, I'm sure she'll be fine, she's not a little child you have to constantly look after.
Okay, okay, I get it.
It's sweet- it's sweet that you're concerned, though.
Yeah. Natsuki must have been looking at my expression because she suddenly pipes up.
If it makes you feel any better, I'll go and check on her.
Eh? She looks down at the floor, looking like she's struggling with her words.
Eh, I mean, she's my friend too, so...
I grin. Natsuki has always been someone who's really bad at hiding her true feelings. You're worried about her too, aren't you?
No! It's just, well, we've been getting a bit closer, so she... Ugh! I just thought she'd appreciate it if I went to see if she was alright, okay? Aw, look at you looking out for Yuri so much, hehe! It's so cute!
Seeing the look on Natsuki's face, Marga hastily interjects.
I think what Sayori really means is that it was really nice that you two were bonding so well, so late. Looks like... It looks like you both put aside your differences, and it's great to see. God, you make everything sound so sentimental and awkward. Ha, sorry, Natsuki. Anyway, seeing that Yuri isn't here today, there isn't much point in sharing poems for our club meeting.
Why, you did it when Sayori wasn't there, wow! Kind of a- you shared poems when Sayori wasn't there, but Yuri isn't there, all of a sudden we're not gonna do club activities today?
Instead, why don't we try writing one? Instead, why don't we try writing one instead?
Redundant, much redundant?
Ooh, something new! Yeah, I'd be okay with that! What about the poems we've already written, though? We can share them- we can share them when Yuri gets back- when Yuri's back. We'll all get more feedback that way too. Eh, I guess that can work.
No complaints here.
Ha, I figured you'd say that, Killen. At a hunch, you were slightly preoccupied over this weekend and weren't able to write a poem.
No idea what you're talking about, Monica, I wasn't preoccupied with Yuri's boobs at all! What are you talking about?
Well, have you written a poem?
Hehehehe! Ahahaha! Got him! What a mystery- what a mystery we'll all be taking to our graves! Marga doesn't look particularly convinced, but thankfully the bell rings, sparing me any further interrogation. As I pack our things away, prepare to head back to classroom, head to our homeroom classes, an idea comes to mind. I think Yuri would appreciate if I wrote a poem for her. Yeah, it'd be a great little romantic gesture. Let's just get through the rest of the day. With my final lesson over, I make my way back to the clubroom, eager to test out my poetic abilities. I really changed, haven't I? I didn't mind writing poems back in September, but now, I'm so eager to do so. Oh well, it's hardly a bad thing. Did no- did no one bring up the note for Valentine's Day though? I mean, it just happened like fairly recently, maybe Sayori will bring it up, I don't know. Once again, I'm the last one in, as I settle to a desk, Marga clears her throat and addresses everyone in the room.
Okay, everyone. There isn't really much for me to say, uh-huh, after all, you know what you're meant to do, so feel free to start. By all means, feel free to collaborate with others if you want to. If you want to, I figured this would be a great way to get some insight on how you guys write poems. Way to put us under pressure, Monica. Uh-huh, sorry. Just seeing what you could come up with, and if you want to finish it at home, that's fine. I just didn't want to waste a session, and I figured some- I figured something new might be appreciated. It's okay, Monica. Come on, Natsuki, let's work together and see what we can come up with.
Oh, so we're gonna be with Monica, we're gonna be like, "Yo, ay yo Monica, ay yo girl, help us write something for Yuri." She leads the way as I reach into my bag. As I'm pulling out my writing materials, I pause. It's that note I received on Valentine's Day, oh, here we go. Man, I totally forgotten about that. What should I do with- what should I do about it? Even if I'm more happy with Yuri, I'd be lying if I said I wasn't least curious about whom the sender is. Looking around, I see that Natsuki- that Sayori and Natsuki are busy. Well, at least Sayori is, as she's animatedly chatting away while Natsuki is looking like she's pretending to listen. Mood. Marga doesn't look preoccupied with something for a change, so... Hey Monica!
What's up, Killen?
I lower my voice and shift my chair so I'm a bit closer to Monica. This prompts for raising her eyebrows, an understandably- an understandable response, I guess. Listen, can I, um, ask you something?
Something confidential, I assume?
She discreetly nods at the other two girls. I nod my head and show her the now crumpled note. I found this envelope in my locker on Valentine's Day.
And you're asking me if I know who it's from?
What?
How'd you guess? Well, it's either that or you're gonna ask if I sent it, and I think we both know the answer to that question.
Though her tone is dry, I could firmly detect the humor in her voice. I sometimes forget how much Monica likes to tease people. So, any ideas?
You tell me, Killen.
I blink at her, he's like, "Do I know this person?" What's that supposed to mean?
In other words, I'm asking if you have any idea yourself.
Well... It has to be from someone I know. I can't imagine it being from any of my classmates. I honestly couldn't imagine it coming from Sayori, and obviously you haven't, so... My eyes wander over to the back of Sayori's head. Marga must have followed where I was looking as she nods.
Looks like you didn't need my detective skills after all, huh?
But, Sayori?
Didn't she also receive friendship chocolate from her?
Yeah, but that was just that. Friendship chocolate, right? Marga stares at me for a moment, and somehow I get the feeling that she's doing her best not to roll her eyes. I don't know, I just... It's just weird to think of Sayori in that sense. You've always been good friends, and it's kinda weird to imagine it's being anything more than that. And Marga looks like that because Sayori has been pouring out her- pouring out her heart to her about how... How it hurts to see her childhood friend in love with somebody else because she wants to get it in with us.
There's nothing wrong with feeling that way, Killen. Besides, you're happy with Yuri now, anyway.
I guess, I just feel kinda bad for Sayori, you know?
But there's nothing you can do to spend time with her, as friends. But there's nothing to say that you can't spend time with her, as friends.
Or, just take her on as your second wife! You could do that too!
I know she'd probably really appreciate that.
Especially since we stopped walking to school together. A horrible feeling of guilt flushes over my body. Yeah, you're right. Thanks, Monica.
Ha, it's okay. Now, have you got a poem to get working on?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Guess I'll get started. After some time, Marga stands up and addresses everyone once more.
Okay, everyone. I think that's all the time we have for today. How are all the poems coming along?
I glance down at mine, I'm really happy with it, although I'm not entirely sure how Yuri would perceive it. After all, she does have quite high standards.
Pretty good, I think I'll finish the rest at home. Yeah, same here.
Mine is actually finished.
Looks like everyone's on the same boat, then. We can all sort- we can all sort, um, sort out when to share the poems tomorrow, because I really gotta dash. I'll see you guys tomorrow.
After swiftly packing our things, Marga zooms out of the door with a velocity of a bullet. Me and the other two girls also start packing, and before long, we're good to go. While writing my poem, I decide I wanted to walk Sayori home, but surprisingly, she's already gone. Natsuki is the only one left, and I awkwardly hover by the door, oh, and she's awkwardly hovering by the door.
You gonna be much longer?
Huh? Oh, no, sorry. Guess I've been a little too lost in thought, huh? But this time, we're really alone. I swiftly pack up my stuff and join Natsuki in the corridor. Still gonna check up on Yuri? She nods. Sounds good, let me know how she's doing, okay?
Sheesh, do you get paid to worry or something?
I start to laugh, but the memory of the cuts on Yuri's arms suddenly come flooding back. The laugh turns to more of a wince. Natsuki looks at me curiously. Ha, yeah, probably. See you tomorrow. Natsuki still looks a little suspicious, but doesn't say anything. It's been a couple of hours since I got home. Bleh, I couldn't tell cuz it's pitch black outside. Enough time for me to have finished my homework. With nothing left to do, I flop on the sofa and browsing- I start browsing some anime. As I catch up on my favorite series, my mind drifts over to Yuri's house. I wonder how Natsuki's faring at the moment? It's a little strange how she's the one who went over, and not me. But then again, I suppose it's a good thing that they're clearly getting along better these days. I guess Yuri will tell me about it later. My mind also keeps focusing on the Valentine's note, along with Monica's words. If it's really from Sayori, then she... likes me? Duh! Freakin' duh! Super obvious. I mean, in another lifetime, we'd be with Sayori right now, but we're with Yuri right now, so... The note didn't exactly say that, though. "I'm happy if you're happy." What does that mean? It means she's trying to cope with the fact that you're happy with someone else? And she's trying to say that she's happy, but really, she's miserable. You can see that from the water damage on the ink, and the fact that the corner of the envelope was crumpled. She's trying so hard to fight her true emotions and fight through the pain, to keep up the facade of being happy for you. Because at the end of the day, that's what she wants, for you to be happy. She just wants you to be happy with her. If she does indeed have feelings, then could the water damage actually be from tears? Yes! Or is it just my overactive imagination? No! Eh... Still, no matter what's going on, I really should spend more time with Sayori. Explaining it to Yuri might be a little tricky, though. I mean, I don't think so, you and Yuri are like pretty close now. In several ways, and Yuri said that she has faith that you're not going to cheat on her with another woman, so... Could you spend more time with Sayori as a friend? And build that relationship? I don't really, though... Trying to build a friendship with Sayori would be rather complicated, because if she likes you, then... You can't really- it's kinda hard to have a... It's kinda hard to have a platonic relationship with someone of the opposite sex when there's feelings involved. Kinda throws the whole platonic thing out the window. I don't really want her knowing that Sayori might have feelings for me. Thinking about it, I could just say I haven't spent much time with Sayori recently. Nothing dishonest about that, and besides, I'd never do anything to betray Yuri's trust. Yeah, that's a good idea. Man, Yuri really has a habit of ringing me when I'm thinking about her, doesn't she? Well, you've been putting that energy out there that you had Yuri on her mind, so eventually that energy you've been putting out... Reached- reached her, and she's like, "Hmm, I better call Killen." He's like, "Hey, hey Yuri, how are you feeling?"
A little better, thanks.
Is Natsuki over?
Yes, she is, I have to admit, I was a little surprised.
Yeah, she mentioned she was gonna come see you at lunchtime, I didn't see it coming either. You never see ya comin'! I'm ready, gonna come for right, I'm comin'! See, now you're ready for the last surprise! But it's good to see that you two are getting along so well these days.
Hmm, I agree, this is a far cry from how we used to be.
I don't know if this- oh.
I don't know if this is a strange thing to say, but I wish you were in my class at school.
Oh, it's only natural that you wanna be able to talk to your friends in class.
Yes, I suppose so, it's just a bit surreal having a close friend like her. Although, if I'm being honest... As- as nice as it is to have her around...
I'd much rather have you around.
I wish it was you who was looking after me, not her.
Huh? You're the one who said I didn't have to come over when you rang in the morning.
And she's like, "Yeah, I did say that, but I... In this case, I was hoping that you wouldn't have listened to me, and would've came over anyway. I'm expecting to be a mind reader, yes, I know, unfair."
I know. Sorry, I'm just being weird again.
You sure you don't want to talk about it?
Well... Alright. I- I just feel warm and secure when I think about being with you. But I don't want to be clingy or obsessive. Onl- only, I don't really know where the proper boundary should be. There must be something wrong with me. I like having personal space, but at the same time, I want to stay by your side.
That's called the honeymoon phase, that's what it is! I like you, you like me, we want to be with each other, is that so hard to see? Come together, right now, over me! Doon 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 doon, shoot me! Doon 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 doon, shoot me! Doon 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 doon! It's obvious, man, you guys wanna be together, it's okay! I mean, yes, like Marga said, having time apart is healthy, you don't wanna be up under each other all the time. But, it's natural to wanna be together with somebody you like, and somebody you have a very intimate connection with. And plus, you two are husband and wife now, so you're basically on your way to becoming one. You don't wanna be apart from the one now, do ya? Hmm, honestly, I don't think that- I don't think it's that strange- it's that strange to feel that way. I mean, aren't couples supposed to be lovey dovey and attached at the hip and all that? That is true, isn't it? I obviously don't have much experience with relationships, but, from what I've seen, well, that's how it always seems for movies and stuff. Although right now, although right now that I think about it, movies probably aren't the best source for romantic advice, no, they are not! Of course, it's good to keep our independence and maintain some personal space at least. But I guess it's also a matter of how much we express our individual love languages. Personally, I'd much rather- personally, I'd much rather enjoy my personal downtime. I'd much rather enjoy my personal downtime, but somehow I don't think I could bring myself- I should bring that up right now. At any rate, we're still in the honeymoon phase of our- of our relationship, right?
Right, of course. Sorry, I'm just being really silly at the moment.
I hear her take a deep breath.
Don't worry about it, seriously. What did you and the others get up to during the club meeting today?
Yuri's behavior is still a bit suspicious, but I decided to let it go. This isn't really a conversation to be having over the phone. Uh, not much, we decided to write poems instead of sharing them, so it was pretty quiet.
Oh, well, I look forward to reading your latest poem, then.
Any idea when that will be?
Ah, I'm actually feeling a lot better, so most likely tomorrow, or the day after. I don't want to jinx anything just yet.
Fair enough. I think you'll really like this one, or at least I hope, haha!
Oh, why is that?
You'll have to wait and see.
Hoo hoo, a man of mystery.
Haha, yeah. Here's an awkward silence- this awkward moment of silence.
Anyway, Natsuki's insisting that I get some proper rest, so I should probably- so I should probably get more sleep. Some more sleep before she gets angry. I'll speak to you soon, and hopefully see you tomorrow, okay? I love you, Killen.
Love you too, Yuri, get some rest. The call ends as I slip my phone back into my pocket. There's no denying that Yuri does sound a little bit obsessive, but... Is there anything to be concerned over? Well... That depends, how is Yuri written in this mod? Is she gonna go full-blown act two Yuri? If so, then we definitely have something to worry about. Sure, it's good to spend time away from your partner. But I'd be lying if I said I wasn't disappointed over the fact that it's Natsuki and not me who's taking care of her. Well, Yuri so much so said the same thing. Well, it's too late to see Yuri now, anyway, plus, Nurse Natsuki is there, so there's no point in thinking about it. Clingy or not, for someone who struggles with acceptance, both from herself and from others. I suppose she's doing well. With a shrug, I turn back to the television screen and immerse myself once more in the colorful world of anime. Attaboy, attaboy! We will see Yuri Chan soon enough. In the meantime, we need to figure out what's going on with Sayori. Uh, things are getting interesting here, ladies and gentlemen. Ugh, why is it that the scariest nightmares are always the ones we fail out of school? Some might say that's a bad omen, especially since final season is fast approaching. It takes so much effort to study, though. Mood, big mood. You know what, I'm just not gonna think about it. Although, I feel like I'm forgetting something. Something exceedingly important, your childhood friend perhaps? This isn't going to be something like me forgetting to walk to school with Sayori again, is it? Oh well, might as well get ready for the day while I mull over my forgetfulness. As I sit on the toilet and scroll through my- my read-it- my read-it feed... I su- uh, I suddenly hear the- the telltale bells of a text message. Ooh?
Hey guys, don't forget, we all have study group in an hour, so I hope you're all awake.
They forgot the apostrophe. Crap, I totally forgot about that. What a great host I am, offering up my house for the study session, and then forgetting all about it! Wow! I thought they were just gonna meet in the club! I offer up a silent thanks to Monica and her dependability. Guess I better get off the toilet and clean up the house before Natsuki complains my ears off. That was clean enough, right? I mean, I think so, I mean, it looks the same as it always does, right? Why do I always leave the cleaning until the last minute? It feels like I've been in this situation multiple times, before. You thought that I'd learned my lesson by now? But I haven't eaten breakfast yet, too. As if on cue, my stomach gives a forlorn gurgle. Sorry bud, but the silent expectations and politeness take precedent over survival. Maybe I'll have enough time for a quick bite of toast. Nope, there's a knock on our door! We've been waiting for you! Judging by the politeness of the knock, it's either Yuri or Monica. Coming! Who would've guessed it, it's Yuri.
Killen, hello.
First one here, huh? Can't say that I didn't expect it, though. Haha, you're a whole ten minutes early.
Well, I wasn't doing much of anything, so I decided I might as well come over. Sorry, were you not ready yet?
No, you're good, feel free to come in. I'm actually surprised that Monica isn't early, too. As I usher Yuri into my house, a familiar sounding voice shouts out from the distance in the street.
Wait up, hold the door!
Looks like I spoke too soon. Marga jogs over to us and waves hello, brushing the bangs out of her eyes.
Ha, I should've known you were going to beat me here, Yuri.
I do like to be punctual.
A lot more than punctual, don't you think?
Well, you're one to talk, Monica.
Um...
Ha, it's all a good thing. Obviously, I'm quite early, too, so I'm not one to talk.
I mean, punctuality is a good trait to have, isn't it?
Yep, I feel like it shows that you value others' time when you're punctual.
Yeah, I admittedly need to work on keeping track of time more myself.
Anyway, are we gonna stand here talking until the others show up, or...?
Oh, right, but let's head inside.
So, what's our schedule for today?
Schedule? Aren't we just gonna study?
Well, yes, but shouldn't we discuss how we're going to study and organize ourselves a bit?
I mean, aren't we just gonna read and do problem sets? He's like, I mean, it's just studying. I was like, what? I was like, what, what more do you want? Just study.
But we're not all gonna be studying the same subjects at the same time, right? I was like, but we're not all gonna be studying the same subjects at the same time, right?
Oh, well, hold on. There must be one of, uh, hold on, that must be one of the others. Uh, both Noski and Sayori are at my door. Hey guys, did you coordinate this or something?
Nah, we just happened to see each other on the way here. Hi, Killen. We aren't late, are we?
No, you guys are right on time. Yuri and Monica are just as early as usual. Just as early as usual. Now that everyone's here, we can get started. With that, Noski and Sayori follow me to the living room. After slopping hellos, we all settle down on the living room sofa.
So, what are we, what are we doing first? Killen, Monica, and I actually have been discussing it right before you two joined us.
Mm-hmm, we were talking about some kind of agenda. Do you really need something like that? All we're gonna do is study.
That's what I asked! He's like, that's what I said! But apparently, that's not good enough for some people.
And still be helpful to plan out where you're gonna study, though, in my opinion. We do have around five subjects to study, so we should plan accordingly. Don't you guys plan out your studying?
No.
Me neither. I'm just gonna study for exams in the order that they come in, like, a week beforehand.
Hehe, me too. Well, I kinda crammed the day before, though.
Monica looks over desperately at Yuri. She's like, Yuri, please tell me you're responsible like me.
I study in a more organized manner myself. It helps me stay on track when I'm going over subjects that I don't like as much.
Thank you, thank you. I'm not alone, gosh. As the top two students in this group, I say that both my and Yuri's studying habits take precedent over yours.
Wow, Monica, condescending much?
Hey, what's that supposed to mean? It means that we're going to whip you guys into shape, right, Yuri?
Um, I suppose so. Could I ask what that entails first?
Ha, it just means that we're going to help everyone stay focused. And that means no romantic coloring between you and Killen, too.
Wow, wow. Monica's taking shots left and right, taking shots at everyone, then taking shots at me and Yuri. Monica pulls dough punches.
Oh, I wasn't even thinking of... Ooh.
Jeez, Monica, who do you think we are?
Ha, only joking.
Um, anyway, should we focus on the subjects that we're the weakest in first? We're only going to be here for a few hours, so we likely won't be able to study every single subject we have. And since we're all together, we should probably study material that we can ask each other for help on. After all, we could probably study our strongest subjects quite easily on our own.
That's a great idea, Yuri.
Yep, although, what happens if I weaken all of my subjects?
Sayori, don't try to be, don't try, try not to be so hard on yourself. After all, you're pretty good with literature, at least. Yeah, you'll probably do fine in your classes. If anything, it's Killen who has to worry.
Hey, I'll have you know that I've aced some of my tests before.
Hehe, I don't thi- oh. Hehe, I don't think any of us will need help studying literature, though. I mean, we are the literature club after all.
So... So, so I guess none of us are going to study, be studying Japanese, unless someone needs help with grammar. Nah, my worst subjects are science and history.
Oh, really? I'll probably be able to help you out with history, but I gotta work on math first, myself.
I'm strong in history and science as well, so feel free to ask me any questions, too. Although, math, well, they're more enjoyable subjects, to say the least.
Ha, you two are locked, because math is one of my strongest areas.
Could you add one more to the group? I'm kinda bad at math and science.
Ha, no problem. Aren't you gonna, aren't you gonna English, Sayori?
Um, I'm okay at it.
Nice, then you helped me with that, too. The grammar always gets me.
I believe that's everyone sorted out, then.
Yeah, it's like we're, it's like we all know, we're, it's like we all know, we all know we're gonna study now, I think. We all know what we're gonna study now, I think.
Ugh, can't believe we're actually doing this. Guess it's gonna be forced to study earlier, though. Ha, that's the spirit.
Oh, I nearly forgot. Is anyone thirsty or hungry? I could get us all snacks and drinks and stuff to help us power through this.
If it's not too much of a bother, that'd be lovely. Actually, would you like? I can help. I can still have all kinds of snacks. I still have, um, if you still have all the same kind of snacks, I know perfect ones for each person.
Ah, that'd be great, thanks. Yuri, were you gonna say something?
No, that's alright. We'll be waiting for you two, we'll be waiting for you two, we'll be waiting for you two, then.
Okay, let's hurry up then, Sayori. Yo, look at Sayori helping out, though. I wonder, I hope this doesn't become sus. Let's see, I'll grab the bottles of water while you grab the snacks, alright?
Sure, are they still in the same cupboards?
Yep, I just leave them wherever mom stuff, where, wherever mom stuffs them when she comes back from her trips.
I haven't been in your house for so long, Killen. It makes me feel really nostalgic.
Yeah, I guess so. Kinda feels like, uh, kinda feels like we're ki- we're kids again, just for a moment.
I always had a hard time picking, um, picking from the snacks you had.
You better not take an hour like that one time when...
You meanie? That's just because your mom brought a bunch of different flavors of my fa- of my favorite gummies.
Man, you could've tried them all, you know?
But I didn't wanna be rude and eat everything.
Sayori sighs, shuffling some packages around on the shelves.
Looks like there's only one pack of gummies now.
Oh, that's probably because my mom noticed you weren't coming over so often anymore. I always liked the chips and crackers more, so... A slow silence creeps over us. I didn't know what to say. How am I supposed to address the huge elephant in the room of drifting away from Sayori again?
Hey, Killen.
What's up?
Do you wanna hang out with me tomorrow? Only if you're free, that is.
Huh? Sure thing. Is there any reason why?
No, it's just for old time's sake.
I mentally facepalm. What, does Sayori need a specific reason to hang out with her oldest friend now? I was like, wow, he's like, wow, what a dick I've become. Sayori, I'm sorry that I've been such a terrible friend to you.
Don't worry, it's only natural that you'd spend more time with your girlfriend. I wouldn't wanna get in your way.
I... You'll always be my dearest friend, okay? Ah, you'll always be my dearest friend cliche. Glad to see that hasn't gone away. Please don't ever forget that. After all, you've been there since we were dumb little kids.
Hehe, thanks for the sentiments, Killen. But that's not exactly true now, is it?
She suddenly soups out the bag of gummies, a bag of red bean pancakes, and a bag of rice crack, a package of rice crackers.
Come on, the others must be waiting. The others must be wondering why we're taking so long.
I'm left standing alone in the kitchen, crumpling up a water ball in my hands. Why am I such an idiot? Of course she'd be able to see through my empty words. I was like, uh, yeah, you're stupefied by that bomb Sayori just dropped on you, the fact that she did tell you're a phony. Maybe it's a good thing that I'm gonna be studying today. It helped keep me from thinking about all the mistakes I've made. We're all lazing around at this point, having each settle into our own comfortable studying positions. Monica's laying on the floor silently doing reading while popping the occasional cracker into her mouth. Meanwhile, Yuri's sitting primly on the sofa next to me meticulously finishing problem after problem of math. Noski and Sayori are both sitting on the floor, working on, working on the coffee table, sharing the bag of gummies. I lean back and wince as a huge, as a huge crack sounds through my neck. Ugh! The pink-haired girl throws her hands up frus- throws her hands up in the air and waives, and waves like she just don't care.
I can't deal with this anymore.
What can you deal with anymore?
The freaking Calvin cycle and Krebs cycle for photosynthesis and whatever.
Ah, yes, yes, the Krebs cycle, the Calvin cycle for aromatic and anaeroma- for aerobic and anaerobic respiration. Ah, yes. Brings me back to such good memories from biology.
Who cares about this stuff? Your science teacher probably does. Shut up. I'm not gonna become some kind of plant biologist when I'm older, so why do I need to know all the chemicals and how ATP is made and stuff?
If it helps, I know some effective mnemonic devices that, that'll make memorizing those processes easier.
Teach me them. I'll do anything to make this go faster.
Noski hops up and jams herself between Yuri and me on the couch.
Here's my notebook. Now, how do I memorize it?
With a light laugh, Yuri perc- um, proceeds to summarize the concepts for Noski. Just listening without paying attention, it sounds like a million scientific terms are spewing out of Yuri's mouth. But listening more carefully, Yuri's actually explaining everything in a concise and elegant manner. Seemingly addressing potential questions before they're even asked.
So, do you understand it now? You've been down my mnemonic devices, right?
Yep, and I think I get it. Let me try and explain it back to you to make sure.
Noski rotefully rattles off the material.
Hmm, I see you're ready to move on now.
Seriously? Thanks a bunch. You're a total lifesaver. You should be a teacher or something someday.
A teacher? I don't think I'm suited for dealing with so many people.
Well, maybe not a teacher, but how about a professor? Like in a university. That way, you can just lecture on students during, about stuff, and you'll, you'll just have to talk to students one at a time during office hours.
True, unless you get a big group of students to come in, because the exam is coming up and you gotta get ready for it.
I suppose that would be more manageable, but I don't know.
Well, I guess you'll figure what, uh, you'll figure out what job you want when you're in university.
That reminds me, are you planning on heading there yourself?
Um, to be honest, I don't know. I know that the smart thing to do would be to go to university and get some kind of degree so I can find a high, a higher-paying job. But I don't know what I want to do in university. Maybe I'll just become a salary woman. Oh, so sexy.
Hmm, you'd want to work at an office job, then?
Well, I wouldn't want to do it, but it's what pays. If we were talking about our dream jobs, well...
What is it?
Ah, this is kind of embarrassing now that I'm saying it. But I really wanna be a manga artist.
Yeah, she wants to be a mangaka. Come on, Noski. Come on, Noski, just, just accept the fact you wanna be a mangaka.
Oh, weren't you drawing manga that one time?
Yeah, kinda. It's just a hobby for now, but it'd really be nice if I could do it as a job.
What kind of manga would you create, then? Romance stories?
Um, maybe. I do like drawing cute girls more than any, more than things like fight scenes. I don't know, it's just really hard to break into the manga scene, though, and you probably have, I'd probably make a better living as a secretary or something.
Well, I mean, you could go to school to, you go to, like, design school and stuff, or like, um, art school, and become a manga artist. And you could probably moonlight and stuff on the side, or do some freelance work to get, to get money, and then when you're not doing freelance work, you're working on your manga. You could self-publish it, and then become known for it. And then who knows, you could become a manga artist in your own right, as long as you create something that's creative and unique, that people derive a lot of value out of. I don't see why you couldn't do it if you really, if you really put your mind to it.
But I think you can, but I think you could, but I think that you could do it.
Eh?
Well, you s- you just seem really passionate about manga. If you're able to pour off your feelings into your work, I'm sure that you'd be able to draw and write something that could resonate with your audience. I'm not particularly a fan of romance stories myself, but if you ever publish your manga, I'll be sure to support it.
Heh, heh, thanks.
A bright smile lights up Noski's face.
Although, I read things besides shoujo manga, too, you know?
Hmm, like what?
I actually know a few really good thriller manga that I could recommend for you. And before you say anything, you're a super good, like, less cutesy and more realistic. Some of them have crazy amounts of gore, even.
I see. You know what? I'd like to read them with you.
Really? I didn't actually expect you to say yes.
Oh.
Ha, but it's super cool and you're open to it. I'll bring a copy of one to, to the club next time.
Hoo hoo, I'm looking forward to it.
Aw, Yuri and Noski are becoming friends. Noski suddenly looks over my direction.
Jeez, can you be a little less obvious and eavesdropping, Killen?
Shoot, I hadn't even realized I was eavesdropping. Well, you are right next to me.
Hmm, how nosy. Man, I feel like I made enough progress for today at this point. I totally don't feel like studying anymore. What time is it, anyway?
Around six P M.
Damn, I've been there for basically the whole day.
Oh crap, seriously? How do we stay still for so long?
I'm sure the snacks helped, uh-huh.
Monica stands up and stretches, arching her back so that her ponytail dips low and nearly brushes the floor.
Anyway, I was about to call it a day, too. I'm sure you wouldn't want to impose on Killen by staying for dinner, especially since he hasn't prepped some, for so many dinner guests.
Yeah, I think I'm beat, too.
Unless we had snacks to hold off our hunger. I am looking forward to dinner, though, hehe.
I'm sure we're all feeling the same, hoo hoo.
You can all leave the snacks and stuff where they are. I'll take care of it all later.
Are you sure? We wouldn't want to be a bother.
Yeah, it's only gonna take me like five minutes to deal with it, so don't worry about it.
Okay, everyone, I guess that's that, then. Nice work today. Everyone was super productive. Looks like Yuri and I may have some competition when it comes to our class rankings, huh?
Man, it feels like this is just one long club meeting now.
Hoo hoo, I suppose it was, in a way.
We all get up and stretch, too, following Monica's example. A few moments later, the club members all send their goodbyes and shuffle out the door. Well, except for Yuri, who's lagging behind and giving me a more personal goodbye.
I'm guessing that you're not used to studying this hard, uh-huh.
Well, I have to admit that I usually get distracted a lot more, but this time, I had the rest of you pushing me to do well. Do you think we'll have another study session sometime?
Most likely. I think we'll be able to help each other somewhat. Monica's assistance with interi- with integration in inf- in Infinite Series was definitely invaluable.
Not to mention the help that you provided in the sciences.
Oh, it was nothing.
Are you kidding me? You basically saved Noski's grade back there.
Ha, uh, I think you're exaggerating, but thank you for the compliment. Also, now that we've done a bit of, now that we've done a bit of studying now, would you like to take a break tomorrow and hang out with me?
Shit!
I was thinking of seeing a film adaptation with the novels we discussed together.
Tomorrow? Sorry, but I already promised Sayori that I'd hang out with her.
Sayori? Oh, I see. That does sound like more fun, doesn't it?
Hey, I grab Yuri's shoulders. I'd absolutely love to go out with you tomorrow. But what kind of person would I be if I broke promises left and right just to do that? I'm not making up an excuse so I don't have to go out, so I don't have to go with you. It was just genuinely unlucky that, it was, it's just that we were genuinely unlucky with this schedule conflict. I mean, you could just go out with her the day after tomorrow, or you could see how long, s- well, no, you just go out with her the day after tomorrow, I mean... Unless Yuri's busy that day.
Sorry, I, I know that. I shouldn't have said that. It's not your fault at all. I just blurted out a passing intrusive thought. I shouldn't have said that. It's not your fault at all. I just blurted out a passing intrusive thought. I'd never want you to choose between me and one of your other friends.
Do you still have these intrusive thoughts often? Yuri, you should really look into therapy one more time.
Killin', please!
Alright, I won't push you. Just remember that's where I stand on it.
I will.
Have you been self-harming lately? Sorry for making you uncomfortable, but I just wanna know if you're okay.
It's fine, Killin'. I'm not cutting myself as much as before. It's easier to ignore the urges when I can concentrate on other things. Like today for instance. I couldn't do it because I was studying with you all. And being with you has given me a lot more to think about.
Does this mean that I'll be worse for her if I don't go out with her, if I won't be with her tomorrow? Oh god, now I'm feeling incredibly guilty. It's not like it's my fault, but I can't help feeling this way. Hey. I know we won't be able to do anything tomorrow, but how about we plan ahead for something else? That way, you can look forward to it when you're just thinking about random stuff.
Alright, what do you have in mind?
Do you wanna have another date night on White Day?
Heh, I don't think you were that much of a romantic.
Well, I do like to spoil my loved ones, haha. I reach out and hold Yuri's hands in mine.
Were you thinking of a formal type of date, or...?
Hmm, do you actually wanna have a night in and cook a nice dinner together? We haven't done that in a while.
I'd love to.
Yuri leans in and gently kisses me on the cheek. Aw.
Thank you for making so much of an effort for me. You can't imagine how much I appreciate it.
And thank you for actually wanting to date a huge nerd like me, haha. The mood lightens considerably as we giggle together. Anyway, would you like me to walk you home?
No, thank you, I'm fine. Besides, you just have to clean up your own li... You have to clean up your living room.
Like I said, it'll only take a few minutes to clean up. None of you are particularly messy, so...
I see. Well, I do think I can make it back home in one piece by myself.
Haha, I wouldn't doubt it.
Goodbye then, Killin'.
She steps closer again, this time to give me a goodbye kiss. Before I know it, she's gone again, leaving only the faintest scent of jasmine and the lingering warmth of the kiss behind with me. Alright, I think I'm gonna call an episode here. This was a good episode, and a nice little study session. Hey kids, I wanna thank you guys for watching. And I hope you're enjoying the series so far, because I'm actually having a lot of fun playing this mod, and I can't wait to actually finish Yuri's route. And in case this has been real, it's been fun. It's your boy Jake Killin'. Ciao for now.